Let's call the new order for August 28, 2024. It's on the pledge. What diligence is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all? And we're going to have public hearing for KB Restaurant Enterprises Incorporated, the Shed Willie's.
Okay, so we received the liquor license application on August 20th. It is complete. We received an email back from a foot officer saying that the land use department has not received any complaints pertaining to this property, nor are there any violations at this time. There are no concerns from the land use for Willie's, Ailrum, and Shed. Fire chief sent an email that says just completed a walkthrough, no issues on my end. They continue to do everything they ask for. They're constantly making updates to the facility to make things better. Tom has hopefully just shared with all of you the calls for the last year. These are from the York County Sheriff's Department. Nothing else to update there either. And did run a newspaper. We put a clip that they could send in complaints, thoughts, and we did not receive any.
Do you have any questions for Bill? Billy, welcome on. You got any questions for us?
Oh, no, no, no.
You all good? Okay, good. Pretty much mall, yeah. Okay, let's see.
Can we take a vote on this now?
No, no. No.
Good business.
Can I grab it in?
Sometime after one or two.
After one?
One or two, unless you want to wait until the end of the meeting.
No, no, no. I'll get it tomorrow. All right, thank you.
Thanks.
If you guys don't have any questions, I guess we'll close down the public hearing.
Okay.
Make a motion? What's that?
Motion to approve.
Make a motion to close the meeting?
Oh, okay. Second.
All in favor? Okay, now we want to warn bells.
Hold up.
Done. Rule the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda. Second.
All in favor? Minutes of last meeting.
I move to approve the minutes from the August 14th, 2024 meeting.
Second.
All in favor? Tom, I'm gonna show you really quick.
Just a couple items for you. First is to let you know that our land use assistant has completed his residential building codes, so he's now up to fourth certification out of nine, so good job to date. Next is to let you know that the fire chief came in this afternoon and gave me a state-名义 surplus property program. It's a surplus program through the state that is open to municipalities first. It's just an application that we're gonna fill out. It doesn't tie us to anything, but it gives him basically a big warehouse of overstock that gives municipalities first refusal on buying certain things, you know, computers, desk chairs. So we're gonna see if he can save some money there, purchase additional items. Tax bills should hit the mailboxes in about two weeks. They have actually committed to taxes and we have people that have already come in and made payments. We should shoot the bill in about two weeks. Fire chief also wanted to let you know that I think I forwarded you an email. He did some groundskeeping work out front. We'll be able to specify a little more, but basically they took out some steps that were out front and made a dip that was constantly becoming a hazard. They flattened it out, correct?
Yeah, we just removed the old concrete and paved it in.
All right, so it's flattened out. And the building next door, he has closed off, not to be used. He says that the upstairs, there's some flooring, some issues with the stairs and flooring, so right now it's not being used.
So all the buildings that we talked about?
Yes, upstairs, the upstairs area. Do you know anything about that, Dan?
About the...
Building?
Sorry, I was... Can you say that again?
The bill did, I knew you meant the fire chief on Monday. Did he mention the building that...
We, our meeting was more focused on kind of getting the document that had been requested from the previous level meeting.
Oh, for the benefits, okay.
Yeah.
Anyway, it's just an FYI, so we're not getting some corporate advice. And the last thing, I took it off the agenda at the last minute, but I wanted to hand it to David. This is, this is the main department of transportation that is, wants the board to sign this agreement that stipulates a construction area and permits and things the town will or won't do. It's quite detailed, so I took it off the agenda and hoping that maybe you can take a moment and read it. See what you have for thoughts, sort of roadways on. That's all I have tonight.
Okay. Paul, please.
The audit's underway. I haven't heard much about it. Jennifer, they're off doing their thing.
They're just asking, asking, asking.
Asking for additional information and between treasurer, Jennifer, and Mark Boy, I think all of those things have been done. This little publication, Sanford's Big Bill News. I'd never seen this before, but it was referencing here to a grant for Sanford that paid for 90% of the annuals.
Oh, nice.
So I'll pass this to you and maybe you could share this with the chief. And there's also a lawsuit going on between Alfred and someone, maybe Sanford, about a bridge that they co-owned. And I didn't know if that might have something to do with the hopper.
Oh, so I might have some connections with that Sanford, like, kind of.
That's it for me.
Ed? Nothing on the transfer station, nothing on animal control. Very grand. They've got a meeting coming up on the 7th at 10:00 a.m. Really all I got.
And animal control, I could add, and he started his state certifications. So those are underway. He's got six months to get them certified, but we've already signed up some classes, so he's in good shape. He's continuing to do well.
I had a meeting with the fire chief this past Monday. We've kind of just been over how to present the information that was asked by the select board to make it easier to read. The recreation committee, I did send out an email to our current sitting members just to let them know about getting word out about making connections, people who are interested in joining the committee or applying for the rect director position. I've been in communication with John and Hope in regards to talking about, again, promoting the open seats on the committee in the rect director position. I did get information from the photographer, that's that information with John and Hope as well, scheduling photos for the team. And I know that they are working on not only soccer, but starting to look into cheer and basketball as well. I've made connections with Coach Nicole about that. And then for the conservation forest committee, I, we're gonna be talking about kind of the ordinance a little bit later on, but I've also been in communication about getting their information to get onto. Whoops, I was gonna email Dan about that today, but my email was down. And then just also attended the planning board meeting a couple of weeks ago, walking through John. And I also want to give a shout out to Cheryl. Jen and I talked about getting little nameplates, temporary ones for committees, and she did a beautiful job to those outside of committees' meetings. Hopefully they'll have just a nice little nameplate for people who can recognize them when they meet.
Yeah, perfect. I'd just add one thing on the rec. You know that Hope and John have taken over soccer and they're organizing that very well. John brought in an update from Hope on all the, everything going on with soccer. It's very well detailed. We ran short of time. Well, we chatted earlier, so I didn't get that key, but I'll email it to you. But essentially it breaks down soccer and everything, where everything's at on Sanford. We're gonna go ahead and tie down a date for some of the Christmas tree lighting and some of the other events just to make sure they're on the calendar, and then when the new rect director comes in, they can take over. But we continue to appreciate all Hope's work in the soccer program.
Kind of a job.
Excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry, call me John.
You told me you weren't talking about Hope. You go back to the record. Do we have, were we taking a phone call from school above the mats down there?
Yes, yes, yes. So we, I got an email from the facilities director indicating that he wasn't aware that the mats were coming or being stored there, and he really didn't have a lot of detail on it. It sounded like he wanted us to move them, but he didn't have the space.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna meet with Andy someday next week, and we're gonna try to figure out what we can do with the rec closet, because once comp cheer starts, the mat's gonna need to be somewhere in the...
It's gotta be there anyways, right?
In the building. So for now, you know, there's plenty of room in the new shed. I can rearrange some things in there and we can...
You mean to bring them up there to the field?
Just for, yeah, just to get them out of the way until we can figure out.
What would they have?
They're six feet tall and three, three feet in diameter, and there's three of them.
I'm just gonna miss them instead, because I swore that we had a plan in advance before we went though.
We did. I thought, yeah.
The plan was that they were gonna be stored at the school.
Right, I was just trying to get that idea.
That was the plan.
We did talk about, remember at one point, getting a storage unit or something like that in case we needed, where they wrestle rec stuff there, and it might be something we might want to look into.
So we've got a closet right there. We've got a closet, but it's, it's not a lot bigger than the bathroom.
You have closets?
No, it's at the school closet. The rec has a closet at the school, it's not a lot bigger than twice the size of the bathroom in there. There's basketballs and all kinds of other paraphernalia in there, so...
I mean, the really valuable stuff, I, you know, I was wanting to put it up here. I'm just worried about putting it up there where it's not being supervised, could be broken, do whatever, but, I mean, there was a lot of money for that stuff. Was it 3,000 bucks for those mats? So, I don't know. Think I'm good with that? Just put them up there?
I, that's why I want to go meet with Andy and see what we can do. You know, that closet doesn't really have ceiling, so it's, if we can find a way to stack things up, we'll figure this out.
Let's clean it up and stack it.
Okay. Oh, me? You all set up?
No, I gotta be slotted. That was the insta.
Oh, was it the insta? I definitely got off the rails again.
So obviously, nothing from the school department yet. I know the planning board's done a few sidewalks recently. And cemetery committee, Jennifer got an email from Steve Perola asking that all of the cemeteries in town get put on a GIS map. And because they do it twice a year for free, we'll foot the bill to get it done now. Jennifer gave Steve a map to fill out where all the cemeteries are. And I am supposed to be meeting with a potential board member tomorrow, and then maybe again next week to fill the two slots that are open. Bill?
Dave, do you want to continue on?
I don't, I finished.
Oh, you did finish, okay. I want to make sure I catch you up.
No, no, I finished everything.
Okay, I'll go review that. I don't have any update on the roads. I did municipal grounds. We talked to Mr. Davis the other day, and I told him it was all set, so I'm gonna get hold of him and see when exactly he's gonna start.
And we got the Article 43 application today. I'll send it over to the road committee. Just wanted to ask you who wrote this. We've got an application in, just came in today. I'll scan it and send it over. It's one of our regulars, I just...
Yeah, okay.
And Tom and I are meeting Friday morning at 8:00 with the gentleman that did the design for our front roof.
Oh, for...
The water here.
Water, yeah.
Yes.
Good, nice.
Actually, can we back up one minute, back to me again?
Sure.
Next thing we would like to do on the police department side is meet with Sheriff Cam. So with the approval of you guys, I'd like that Jennifer, I think that's, set up a time. Jonathan, I'd meet with him.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Oh, you're on the...
Yeah, he's gonna give me a chance, I'll... That's all.
We talked about, this is random, just down the front. Do we decide if we're gonna get signs enough for the flower beds out there?
Boy, I don't remember.
Signs that say what?
About like, don't touch.
Yeah, we talked about putting that, do not touch.
I don't know. Actually, because when I was driving in Sanford, I saw that they had like the Southern Water Farm. They had some really nice signs, like just simple signs that looked nice, but still got the message across. So I just talked about grounds, made me just think about it.
I'll take a peek next time around, I have to deal with the signs there.
All good? Okay. Department head, committee chat.
Will Angley, Board Commissioner. Well, the first two weeks of August, we started in on H-Tro, my special project for pavement. We pretty much got the whole road prepped. Probably got two or three days next week. I just gotta do two crossfolds in the road. Probably gonna do those at the end of next week or first of the fall week. And I talked to Charlie from Allstate, F.R. Carroll today, and we're on the schedule for either the second week in September or the first week in September, grind that road and pave it. So we're on track to do that. I had my new tree guy that I've been working with, they just went up on County Road, gave me three days up there and did a bang-up job. He did all the work in three days, and I was pretty impressed. So he's gonna, I gotta meet with them hopefully the first of the week. I'm gonna show them a couple of the roads I want to have them trim up after the storm. The biggest one, we have Mason Road done, and I'm gonna trim from Westwood Drive. Probably not all the way to the Chapel Line, there's a lot of, there's that one section from Westwood Drive up to like 15th Street, I think it is, or 14th Street I want to prune up. And then I'm gonna have them look at some stuff on Young's Ridge while he's here. And probably gonna do quite a bit of tree work this fall. And then, once I get that road up there situated, I'm gonna go to County Road. We're gonna get it prepped, get it ditched, I hope, hopefully this fall. Well, I'm gonna do it this fall, and then depending on the weather, I think we're gonna hold off, and I'll pave it in the springtime, and that will be all done. So hopefully get going on with it now.
Is there any other maintenance on roads being done? You know, we had the presentation a couple of weeks ago about the way in which preventive maintenance can be done on the roads. Is there any of that activity going on down?
Oh, yeah, I've got another contract that's doing some work, and I also have to do some, once, like I said, once I get that road done, I have to, I have a couple of areas I have to, I have to take care of before winter time, so we will be. But yeah...
Cool patches and stuff like that?
Yeah, stuff like that and everything. But yeah, no, we're gonna keep on it as we can, so...
Do you see cracks at all, or is that...
No, no, we have to go up the pitch for that and everything, so...
But you don't have any of that planned for this year?
No, not cracks, no, no, not like that. But, no, we keep doing our, everything, but I just, my biggest focus is getting that road ready to go.
How long is the H-Road project? How long, is it a mile?
Yeah, this is about a mile.
Just about a mile. And what's the cost of that project?
Payment is $260,000, and to date, I've probably spent, between the tree work and my work, oh, probably, probably 12,000 or 13,000 on it right now.
So something like $275 for a mile?
Yeah, we're not totally done yet.
Yeah, what was the article about? How much was the article?
Oh, it was $260 for the paving, $50,000 for like machine work to prep it, $12,000 for labor. I think I had either 18,000 or 20,000.
All the work, basically, the job was what?
Uh, I think it was like...
It had to be $3...
Yeah, it was like $375.
$375. Wow, for a mile. Okay, thank you, Hope.
Yep.
Anybody else? Okay, we're open to forestry conservation ordinance.
So this came before you, it was a first read last week, so I wanted to hear to get your input on it and see what direction, if any, the board has from there.
I think it reflected some changes that I had reviewed with you. I think you had gone to the state.
Conservation Forestry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Take that all back. Dan?
I mean, I was there when they kind of came up things. The only thing that I had any questions, I talked to Jen about, and that was in regards to language about quorum, because in the draft, I think originally had used, they're looking at seven, but because the three is currently not filled, so if anyone wants to join it, I think we have one more open seat.
Yes, and we actually got an email today from a new member of the fire department that's interested in that seat.
Okay, well, maybe I should slide to all of you out there.
Just give me.
But, and I talked to Jennifer saying about changing it being like the majority of those seated seats. And that was the only really change that I had about it, but I think we talked about next steps, having a public meeting, open forum about it, where a public can kind of share their thoughts.
Well, we're gonna set up a special town meeting at the end first.
But saying that's, that will be further, so right now it's just kind of until those things come along. Just allowing the community to know that it has been reviewed.
Yeah, I think, yeah, so we're talking about having a special town meeting.
And we'll deal with these equipment and...
Yeah, a couple of different things, so we'll join those in. We nailed down a date for that. Then we can talk about public hearings, and then we'll make our, you know, more financeable, and then we can make our recommendations after that. So, okay, we'll move on with it. EMA Director Job Description.
Tom?
Well, actually Jennifer's done all the work on this.
This is in its final, final draft.
We had an earlier draft, and I asked Jennifer to go to the state and see if they had a standard job description for this function, and they did, and that's been incorporated here. I think it picked up any questions that I had. I'm fine with this, and I think we've all had a chance to review it. So if there aren't any comments, I'd like to make a motion. Make a motion that we approve the EMA Director Position Job Description.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Okay. We got new business?
Yep.
KB Restaurant Enterprises Inc., the Shed Willie, liquor license, we're gonna work on it.
So that's the Job Street, um, he's signatures.
Oh.
Okay.
Sorry, go that way. Don't, we take a whole week off if there's a ham, right?
I tried so hard.
It was only active, it was the Friday, though.
The Friday was, did it go. And the C and C, Willie's. Can I make a motion, maybe send it?
Wait, wait, just a second.
I only gave the sign. We have to pump it through.
I missed a piece of it.
You missed a lot of it.
Yeah.
You just gave it, as soon as you...
You still didn't say you don't want it all.
Well, I just need the front page.
There you go.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the liquor license for KB Restaurants, Inc., the Pong Shed.
Second.
All in favor?
Nobody said that she's...
I'll... It's a majority.
Yeah. You. Close to Dan. This is all signed up now?
Yeah, that's, uh...
Should be all set.
Thank you.
Okay, this is 60er bids.
Okay, so we have had this advertised for a couple of weeks now. We've sent it to numerous dealers, posted it online, newspaper, I think we've got five, so... We have something suitable to a $317G. First one's from Milton Katz. It's gonna be the bottom line, because I think they, with your permission, I mean, I really am able to sort through these.
Yeah, just, just the price.
Okay, so we don't know until we compare them to their apples to apples, and they did as we asked, but we can find that out for next week. Milton Katz, after their discount, $64,095.
Is it easy to pick up the warranty?
I think we're gonna have to go through them all and...
Yeah, no, the five-year, 2,000-hour, five-year, 2,000-hour warranty.
What size of chair was that?
242 D3 Skidsteer loader. But I can tell you already, well, for the forks, they price separately. I thought they always came as a pair, but I guess not.
64 what?
$64,095.
Hi, could you reread the model designation?
242 D3 Skidsteer loader.
Thank you.
And then it has all the breakdown underneath it. Next is United Ag and Turf out of Sanford. Okay, so this cover letter essentially says, and he quotes a 318G and a 320G. Both were quoted because 318 is likely 317. However, 320, it's for 2,000 pound lift capacity requirement. 318 is just shy of 1975 pounds. Okay, so the 320G with everything is $68,124. There was no reference of a warranty on the front page.
What kind of machine is this?
It's a Skidsteer.
Oh, Skidsteer, I see.
John Deere.
No, not Deere. Oh, John Deere, sorry. And then the 2023 John Deere 3, so that's a 320.
So they priced up two machines.
Right, I'm just trying to...
And the other one?
2023 John Deere with the plow, with all the attachments, $68,124, easy enough. Next page says 2023 John Deere 320, does the same thing, but it's got total selling price of 62,227. So I'm not sure if one of them is...
Probably the 318.
One of them's a misprint. The last one is selling equipment, there's the breakdown of the forks and the plow.
So it's not all added in the one?
Accessories included.
So you're gonna have to add them up?
Correct, this one is not. So, and again, they're listing that they're quoted two, but essentially the cover page says 2023 320 Skidsteer. Next page says 320 Skidsteer, with all this breakdown, and the last is a two attachment. So I'm gonna have to go through it, unless there's more. Here's the warranty, Tom.
Okay. Let's not go big and for it, I just have to just...
And this is just more standard warranty, so it's not the other price, so we'll follow up and see what's left of that one.
It feels like Christmas morning. Dude, it feels like Christmas morning, you're opening up.
My voice was abbreviated, Skidsteers. All right, this is from Jordan Equipment. This is for an S64 T4 Bobcat Skidsteer motor. 24-month, 2,000-hour warranty, give or take some other fine prints. Oh, there's some...
Oh, it's 24-month, 2,000?
Yeah, yes, and then you can purchase additional ones. Any material? David?
Oh, sorry. Am I not allowed to? I don't, I've never been to a meeting, I just...
Yeah, well, we opened the bids up, and if you've got a question, well, I'll come up afterwards, okay?
Okay, I just wanted to add a couple of things if I could to mine, but afterwards, it's one. Thank you.
I'm just gonna do that.
Okay.
This will be on next week's agenda, once we can prepare everything.
Oh, okay. No, I understand, I just want to make sure that I did everything correctly for you guys. Thank you.
All right, the next one is from Chadwick. This is a R190 Skidsteer. How do you say that?
Gale.
Gale, all right.
Gil.
What is it?
Gil.
Is that the brand name of the Skidsteer? Okay.
It's got lots of check marks, and one page essentially that says $70,000. And again, they've got everything listed out, but I've gotta cross them out and make sure they're covered. MB Tractor? MB Tractor. This is a Kubota SSV seventy-five. And forks, push steers, tires, everything on your list, fifty-five thousand, three nineteen. Tires, foam fills.
That's with the forks in, right?
With everything. It appears to be. Very little fine print. Foam fill, vertical lift loader, buckets. Yep. Forks, no pusher, tires, yeah?
Do you see anything on the warranty there?
Nothing about...
No, okay.
Okay. So I'll put all these up into a nice spreadsheet for you for next week.
That's it?
That's it.
That's fine. I'm pretty straight.
Uh, you want to move, sir? You have some questions?
Yeah, I apologize, I, I haven't been to a meeting like this before, so...
Okay.
What the rules and regulations are, especially when it comes to bids, but I just wanted to add, and it is detailed in there, it is a three-year, two-thousand-hour warranty that comes standard with the R-series model of skid steer loaders. Uh, and that price did include, it's broken down, uh, the snow pusher that you requested and, uh, the forks as well.
Correct.
Uh, if you ever wanted to demo the machine before you made a decision, I'm happy to make myself available and the machine available as well.
I can ask a question? It is made as required, do you come on site for that?
Uh, we can come on site, uh, at an additional cost. I did include, uh, I included four or five different, um, types of warranty options there are. There's a full warranty, there's a powertrain, powertrain and hydraulics, and then there's an option where you can have your services prepaid, uh, and the services are per the manufacturer's recommendation, and you can choose the year and the hours, it's kind of like a, a matrix, right, a chart? And then it'll give you a price, and that's list price, uh, for it, so, um, the short answer is, uh, we can come out, uh, I can also...
There's an extra charge for that.
There is an extra charge for it beyond what I've quoted, and also I can make myself available to pick the machine up and bring it back to the shop.
I see.
That's a service we offer, and that's, uh, free.
How many hours should one of these machines be able to take?
Uh, I would say with proper maintenance, uh, the typical lifespan of a skid steer loader is anywhere between five and six thousand hours.
Thank you.
That's traditional, anyway.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna, uh, look through these, make a decision on this next week. Yeah, awesome. Okay, we are down to brush, chipping bids.
All right, so we followed the same procedure as we did with the skid steer, we only got two bids on this one. Uh, first one is from Jeffrey Simpson. Uh, these people that called and rolled asked to go to the transfer station and look at the pile and talk about the transfer thing to come in, so hopefully they've done that. Uh, Simpson, so grinding, we need to brush and long pile located at the transfer station. We propose material label fifteen thousand. No later, to be done later than December thirty-first.
December thirty-first? Yeah, does that, and that, it does it, see if it's gonna be hauled off?
And contaminants, um, completion of work, brush area will be roughly graded and tracked down with an excavator, which goes to furnish material labor, complete with specs, aiming to be made. Nope, doesn't say anything about that.
They must haul it off, right? Haul that chip?
They don't have to. I mean, when we used to do it, we used to have to leave them, could be using shoulders and stuff like that, but you get so much of it, you gotta get rid of it. Be nice if it was hauled off.
It just says grinding of a municipal brush and long pile located at...
No, that's, that's gonna be considered when we look at the bids, okay.
It does, or it says all contaminants, including non-lethal trash, wood, metal dirt that can't be extracted, will be left in a separate pile and processed. Upon completion of work, it will be graded and tracked down and that's...
I think it's hauled off, because they want track down, graded, it's a...
They've got an hour for some of the...
Chips. Yeah. Yeah, they're, they're, the, the other stuff they're talking most, now and then the brush pile, they have trash in it, they don't like that. They don't want this stuff at all.
Hox Tree Service out of Pittsburgh, please.
Off the coast.
Uh, brush removal and chipping to grind and remove brush and wood chips from the transfer station, ten thousand. So the confirmation for the first one, that they're gonna remove it, find out timelines, check insurance, all that good stuff, anything else? Make a decision next week?
Yeah, I mean, uh...
That's all you got?
Yes, sir.
Was it, the, the person that did it last year is not bid?
Not a good one.
What was, oh, Robin's not here, is he? Uh, what was last year's number?
And I can tell you it was...
Last year, was it?
Up in the tree, right? Cause I'm having, yeah. It was mailed to two-twelve powered mill road. We've sent them on.
What was the cost last year?
Uh, it was fifteen, was it?
It was fifteen.
Was it fifteen thousand? Okay. I thought it was ten.
I thought it was fifteen, but I can locate that all.
Yep. Okay, well, uh, should anybody can give, Ed, be in the knees or maybe out of, give the guy a call, if you guys have all asked those questions, then you wanna take care of that.
Whatever you guys want.
Then maybe you can have an end with it. I'll, I'll do it.
Uh, Jen, you can take care of that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll do that, yep.
That works.
Okay, we'll move on. L.R.A. certification.
So, a yearly main DOT reaches out to us and wants to know how we spend our L.R.A. funds, what we're gonna do with them. Spoke to Will today, he helped me complete this form, it was essentially last year's L.R.A. with fifty-nine thousand, seven sixty-four. There's a list, a list of seven or eight different ways of, we tell them how we spend the, uh, funds and, uh, we answer that. They were actually spent on a capital project as noted above. This year, we're due to get sixty thousand, five twenty-eight. Uh, it only requires a signature from the chairman.
When is the board, that's another one? What project did you use?
Uh, that was Rabal Road and Bank Road.
Yep.
Nice.
Catering permit application, Batwater Holdings LLC, September seventh and fourteenth.
Yeah, so we have, uh, two different weddings, um, both at the Everly, at two forty-eight Milton Mills Road. Uh, one on the seventh, one on the fourteenth. Uh, they're both catering, one-day catering permits, uh, they are licensed, insured, have all the, um, met all the requirements from the state, so we're a little bit more, uh, informational for the, uh, select for. That's the first one.
Where's it being held?
Everly, it's a new...
September seventh, fourteenth, that's at place on Milton Mills?
Oh, yeah, that is part of the order, or the...
Make a motion to approve a catering permit to Batwater Holdings LLC for two events to be held on September seventh and fourteenth at, what's the name of the, uh...
The Everly.
The Everly. Second.
All fair.
And...
It's a standard, you already motioned for both of them.
Oh, okay, he's just...
Recreation Director Position.
All right, so we've had this position, uh, being advertised for a couple of weeks now. Um, as of the close of business, we have not received any applications, so looking for direction from the board, we're going to re-advertise this for a couple of weeks. I know that, I've heard from some people, you know, some are, any kids just getting in school, it's just kind of a busy time, the timing wasn't good, or what you wanted to do from here.
Well, I think we've gotta continue putting it up. You've been advertised, but we felt it, I'd say.
Yeah, we've recently made things work, I know, John Hope got a post on the Facebook page, sharing it more.
There was a problem there.
Oh.
Three of us wanted it.
Oh, okay. My bad, that was my email, but...
No, no, that's fine.
But, um, I did reach out to committee members and committee, which I think it doesn't hurt to keep advertising and, uh, if everyone's interested and they have concerns, come reach out to John and Hope or Jennifer or myself.
Or you.
Yeah, they should just apply, I want to make sure, following a people opportunity. If anybody's interested, just have them send their resume in on this one.
I know they had some turnover at the school with their athletic director position, and that's a part-time position, correct?
Uh, yeah.
Is there any, uh, is it feasible to consider asking to combine the two for maybe a full-time position to serve both the school and the town?
I think the one, who's the...
They just hired someone new.
Only got, and you have somebody different, okay, I was, they do have a new A.D. over there now.
Was it by him?
As far as they don't get.
Just a thought, that, you know, you got a qualified person there, that, um, I don't see any conflict there.
No, no, I think it, I mean, it would be, be worth a while, then we wouldn't have to worry about the conflicts on the sports side of it either.
That's right. We do have a lot of conflict.
But we, we'd have to see if they, that person...
Well, they may not be interested, but if they are, you know, they might like that.
Well, it's not, I mean, I'm sure there's more hours at, at the school taking care of that than there would be, you know, then I do know somebody who's probably come home. Be surprised, probably not, not much difference, there's a lot on the rec side of it.
Yeah.
And the only other thing is that I know in the past, on the previous fill-in eighties, eighties before that, were regular, I don't know, sorry, were, were teachers that were just picked up these, you know, additional jobs, so...
That's not the case now with the new...
I'm not sure if the new one is... The one that held this job for many years.
That's a good idea, that's a good idea.
It's easy enough to find out, I cannot, like, oh, right, yeah.
Dan?
You can reach out to Mr. Ross.
Okay.
So we'll put it up for, um, a couple more weeks?
Well, we're gonna keep it out until we find somebody.
Yeah.
Right?
So we'll just, I'll reword the ad and it'll be until, until billed.
Send, uh, me a copy of that?
Yes.
Okay, take care of that, too. Okay, appointments?
Oh, we have one, just one tonight, uh, Dan's gonna speak up.
Yeah, so, um, Nicole Keaton was interested in the committee, she currently serves as the chair and coach, has a lot of experience and knowledge, um, and we had a discussion on kind of the hopes and, of what she saw for the committee and for her role as coaching. Uh, I think she'd be a great fit, she has a lot of kind of experience with the coaching and on the committee service, like the point contact for the chair, so I, I think her experience would be really, really great for this committee.
Good, good. Awesome.
I move that we, um, appoint Nicole Raymond to the Recreation Committee, um, until, uh, effective today, would it be today?
Yeah.
Until, uh, six-thirty, twenty twenty-five.
Second. All fair?
I will follow up with you now. Do we have any other open positions that we need to talk about?
One in finance. We have two, one in finance positions that we really need to fill before the budget season starts, that would be primary, um, and then I think we have some rec committee numbers.
We have three now, and we need at least one more to be able to meet, but that's, that, do we need a rec director to meet, or would...
No, we, we could be, I mean, the committee could be started with one, starting with...
The board's seven, so you need four to have a, uh, call.
So we have three now.
Three, if they're called and appointed.
It's a very important committee in the town.
More in finance.
More in finance, and anything we can do to encourage residents to come forward and volunteer, you don't need to be, uh, you know, a CPA or a CFO, you just need somebody who can make sense of a town budget in terms of what its priorities are and where money ought to be spent. Seems to me that's the prerequisite for the job, so someone with good common sense and willing to serve, it's, it's a great place to learn about town. You see, you have access to everything, and if you have an interest in serving in the town in the future, it's a great place to get started.
Okay, took you. I was stressed.
Okay, so on the fourteenth, you guys commit the taxes after Tom's presentation. Once you commit the taxes, we go back into our tax rate calculator in the software and we enter it in, and it produces this assessor's certificate of assessment, um, it does all the same numbers, everything from the worksheets that, uh, Tom went over. It essentially directs the tax collector to collect X amount of dollars based on seven point seven, talks about the rates and the due dates and so forth, there are four places that you each need to sign.
Okay. Did you put sticky notes for all of us?
No, not dedicated notes.
Right on, boys. So, two, three. You say four places? Okay, I see, thank you.
Make sure you mark them nice and clear for all of us, Tom.
Well, you just go right under my say the term, you'll be fine. So the tax rate speed set at seven dollars and seven cents.
Correct.
So we've got that number.
Okay.
Yeah, I always, I, not to be, it is using five hundred thousand in town reserves and four hundred thousand in school reserves, so that rate is being held below by using accumulated undesignated reserves over two minutes. That's a lot of money to be using from reserves. I'm glad we're doing it, but, you know...
I missed that one.
The other side for it? Is it better than that?
I think it's... Boss check it out. Yes, I was trying to too. Okay, well, we have a secondary session, but, uh, I think we'll probably do public comment first. Any public comment?
Thank you, you fixed my fence, thank you.
Who did?
Uh, we'll have it done by a contractor.
Nice.
Great job, thank you.
Yeah, I got a fancy good respect, well.
Okay, so we hear a motion?
I believe that we go into executive session, M.R.I.S.A., four oh five six A-one personnel at six fifty-four P.M.
Okay, all fair? And the cameras are... Okay, we hear a motion?
I believe that we come out of executive session...
Three, five, six...
Four, five, six, A-one personnel at seven thirty-seven P.M.
Second. All fair? Okay, no decisions? I do hear a motion.
Make a motion.
Second.
All fair? Good night, everybody.
Good night, folks.
Good night.